Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation given by Pastor Brian Rice from Christ the King Lutheran Church at seventy-three oh eight South Forty-second Street. So if you could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good and gracious God, we pray for a healthy city.
Be the strength for those who are vulnerable, be the healing for those among us who are heal- ill, and be the protection for our first responders, healthcare workers, and government servants. Lord, provide for our neighbors who cannot work at home and protect those who must work outside their homes. As we physically distance, may our neighbors know that they are not alone. As we are separate, may we be close in spirit. Help us to find ways to care for one another through intentional acts of compassion and prevention, and may our caring and concern for others be what is contagious. As we gather tonight for other business unrelated to the pandemic, which causes anxiety for many, keep us also mindful that these concerns, they too, cause anxiety for those who are directly affected by the decisions made. We give thanks for those who have chosen of life of service to the city, those who plan for its success, those who preserve our peace, those who respond in times of crisis. Bless our city and give peace to all who call Bellevue home. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Rice. We'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Burns to approve the agenda. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item six, and that's the claims.
Second.
And I would move to remove the tree board minutes.
Second. Oh, I, we don't need to.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion by Preister, seconded by Cook, to approve the consent agenda with item six, and what's the tree board?
Three.
Item three.
Or five B three.
What is it?
Five B three.
Five B three. We'll move those to the regular agenda. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. So that takes us to item five B three, acknowledge receipt of the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty tree board minutes.
I'll take it.
Councilman Shannon?
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we acknowledge receipt of the tree board minutes.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to acknowledge the receipt of the tree board minutes. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Shannon, for the opportunity to discuss a project. Many people know that on Main Street in Bellevue, we now have two eagles. The eagles have landed on Main, and they're thanks partly to Frank Coomer at Irwin's Jewelry, who had the vision when the ash tree in front of his building was needing to be cut down and removed. He saved part of it, hired a carver, and that chainsaw artist produced an eagle that is very visible and a nice sign for Bellevue. The Eagles Club right down the street had a tree that needed to be removed. They did the same thing, and it inspired me to think of other ash trees that were losing, and in Washington Park, we just had to remove five of those ash trees. One of them was decayed to the point that it's cut clear to the ground. But the four others are able to be carved into artwork, and the project that I'm taking on and have spoken with the mayor and city administrator and the council about is to have those four trees carved, and because Washington Park is our original veterans park, and we have two monuments there already, I would like to see some carvings that I want to work with the veterans groups in Bellevue to put symbols of the area. Since we have Offutt Air Force Base, it seems appropriate to have something symbolic of the Air Force. Maybe I'm biased, but I served in the Army. I'd like to see something from the Army. I would also like to see our first responders represented, the police and firefighters, and because of the historic significance of Chief Logan Fontenelle and the trading post and the history that's here, I would like to see the Native American image be represented and something perhaps of Logan Fontenelle, so I've reached out to his family. I think this is an opportunity for Bellevue to start these chainsaw carvings all around the city. Not only in this park, this area already has three, two, one in addition to the two that are on Main Street, but I'd like to see Bellevue become known for all of these art sculptures, chainsaw carvings, all around the city. So I'm working on some grants. I'm not looking at using city money necessarily and looking at some funding to do that, and I welcome any help. I welcome any of the veterans groups, and I've reached out to some of them already and waiting to get back from them. So if anybody has any questions at a later time or whenever, we're talking about through the tree board, because the tree board has been a part of it and working on the ash trees and the whole plans that we do with our trees in the parks. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for giving me that opportunity.
Councilman Shannon?
Yeah, just a follow-up comment. I think the Logan Fontenelle thing is very appropriate. Just to expound on that a little bit, his donation of one square mile is what started Bellevue. So, you know, they, they've contributed in a lot of ways, but Bellevue's here because of him and his donation, because that's what started our city.
Good point. Thank you.
I think we have plenty of ash trees that can be carved over the next few years. Great idea, Don. Thanks.
Yeah, and maybe the chamber can talk that up a little bit amongst the business community.
More questions? Okay, we got a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to acknowledge the receipt of the tree board minutes. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item six, approval of claims. Councilman Preister?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. We have on the claims the final payment for the Paradise Lakes removal from the flood damage there, and Mayor, because that has been a topic of conversation when we started doing it, was a very expensive project, and I think it's important and helpful for the public to know what the result is and how it is ending up being paid and kind of the status going forward in the future. So perhaps legal counsel, Ms. Robbins, or someone could give us an update.
I can provide a quick update, and then the, the staff, I spoke with city administrator and Mike Christianson and Mark Albert today. We would ask that on page six, under the permits and inspection, the Anderson excavating claim, we are asking that somebody make a motion to amend, to remove that from the claims tonight. We will put that back on the agenda December first. Most of the demolition is complete. Anderson has done a great job doing that. If you haven't been down there, it looks a lot better than it did. There's still just a final, there's a couple of final things that just need to be removed, and we want to make sure that those items are removed prior to approving the claim. So we would ask that somebody make an amendment to remove that item. There, I'd have to pull it. I haven't looked at it for a while. I'm not sure. I just, I just think it's best right now to pull it. They've already been paid, I think, seven hundred and eighty-six on the prior demo. Anything else on that? Okay.
I'll offer the amendment to pull that Anderson excavating bill off the claims.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to pull the Anderson excavation claim off the claims. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would ask, maybe there's somebody else, or maybe Ms. Robbins knows, but in terms of the cleanup, we knew it was kind of a chemical soup down there. The river brought in lots of things. Any update on the status of the cleanup, the condition of the property? And maybe there's somebody else who can give us that information, but.
Get your mic working, Jim. I see you tapping on it.
I'll jump in quick while he's working on his, his mic.
There it goes.
Most of the items are cleared up. Like I said, there's just a couple smaller piles of debris that need to be removed. Mike Christianson went out today, and there's just a couple of those things that need to be removed. Other than that, the greening has been completed. All of the other debris has been removed. The homes have been removed, utilities, plumbing, all that stuff's been accounted for. So if you go out there, it's basically just a flat ground at this point. So all of those concerns have been mitigated and removed. It's just a couple smaller piles of debris. I think Jim has something.
Yeah, Mr. Preister, there's, as calling it like a, an area of soup. Most of that residue that was on there was burned out by sunlight or by sun rays, so there's no toxicity in the soil. Back behind it, while Bree has mentioned it's largely been cleaned up, there's a couple of things we want to make sure that they're done with before we give their final check and answer the holdback. I believe we gave them twenty percent upfront, and the majority of it is what we're filing here. We're also beholden to FEMA. They're the ones that funded this. There's a lien on the property. When and if this is completed in a transaction, when that lien is paid, we'll reimburse FEMA what they paid us for the demolition. There is a buyer on the property, an owner, that intends to redevelop it. We're going to go through that process with him right now. We've got to get the property in order, and then from there, get our lien back in before we do anything. The lien has to be paid before they're allowed to do any permitting down there and the like, so working our way through it, but we hope that within the next ninety days, we'll see some traction there to get them moving, so.
Good, that's helpful. So the city up, paid upfront for the cost as we've paid in the bills, but FEMA is ultimately paying that for us, and then we would recoup that once it's sold or a developer pays for the, the property.
Correct. Actually FEMA provided, they paid us upfront. So FEMA deposited the total demolition bill into our account, and we'll use that FEMA dollars to pay Anderson for the cleanup in there, and then once that lien is settled, then we'll give that back to FEMA. So they'll pay the city, the city will pay FEMA. But FEMA put the money upfront for that.
Okay, that's even better. We didn't have to up, put up the money upfront and then get reimbursed, so.
Correct. No outlay.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for that update.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I got a question for you. As far as this motion, I don't know if there's a timeframe or a, a timing issue as far as the placement of the lien, and if someone is trying to move forward on the purchase, but I, I, if there is, I wonder if we could make a motion to pay it tonight on the condition that it has to be finally approved, inspected, and approved by, say, Mr. Christianson or yourself, and then pay it versus not going another couple of weeks down the road, if timing is an issue.
Timing is not. The sale's actually been completed. The buyer bought that in foreclosure from the bank, so he's already has ownership. The lien is a separate matter, which we'll, we'll work on that transaction. In order for him to pull permits, that lien has to be satisfied, so that's separate from the bill paying. Mike Christianson and Mark Albert met with the excavating company today, and we're anticipating that by our December meeting, we'll be able to authorize and pay that bill. It looks, it's just a minor cleanup, but we don't want to cut that check and then have nothing held over them to finalize the cleanup. Hate to say it that way, but that's our, to make sure it's done. So timing is okay, Mr. Cook.
Any more questions? Okay, we have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to remove the Anderson invoice. And there's no time on it to put it back on, or, okay. We'll just put it back on. All right, any further questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, and we have a motion to approve the claims by Preister, seconded by Shannon. Any further questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentation, seven A, update on Bellevue branding initiative. We have Kevin Hensel from Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening.
Bowtie Tuesday.
It is bowtie Tuesday. So Kevin Hensel, one four five zero seven South Twenty-first Street in Bellevue and with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to give you an update as to where we are with our branding initiative. Bear with me, I have about a hundred and thirteen slides to run through here with you, so.
Yeah, okay.
Just, I'm just kidding. I, I wanted to see eyes to see what kind of response I would get there.
It's a hundred and twelve, isn't it?
Okay, so just a, a quick summary about, how do I get to my, to the actual slideshow? Here we go. Oh, well, we'll worry about that in a second. Present? There we go. Thanks, Bree. So about a year ago, together with the city and a branding initiative committee, we released an RFP a year ago in November, November. Can't believe that's been all a year ago. Went through the process of receiving the RFPs, a, an interview and selection process, and in February entered into an agreement with OBI Creative out of Omaha. And so OBI started right off the bat, working from a research and surveying standpoint, got, got underway for about a month, and then COVID hit, and everyone's attention went elsewhere. So we have continued to be moving forward, but at a slower pace than we had originally planned from our timeline just because we wanted to be, people to be able to focus and, and provide accurate and adequate feedback to the survey information. So here's a, just a quick overview of what I want to, to cover quickly this evening. So the assignment, again, was that OBI was to work with the Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce and the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue community as a whole to understand who we are and what, what we want to be, and who we want to be, and how we brand ourselves, not only externally but internally as well. So OBI's approach starts with research and analysis, which is, the star is where we are now. We have just about completed all of that research and analysis, and with that information, then OBI will be working on developing their messaging and branding strategy. That will then influence the marketing plan, and then we'll move into execution of that marketing plan and then be able to continue to measure and manage and determine whether that messaging is actually working for us and needs to be altered or not. So it doesn't seem like we're very far into the process. We're really wrapping up phase one. When I presented to you originally, we had talked about OBI moving forward initially with phase one and phase two, so we're just about to the end of phase one and ready to move into phase two of that messaging strategy. So the project deliverables, investment, and original timeline. So right now, we have made it through, oh, those little check marks came up a little different. We are up through working on, through with surveys and working on the online forum via MindMixer platform. So those little checkboxes didn't, didn't line up quite correctly there. So we'll be moving forward. That MindMixer online platform is kind of a, a town hall forum, but only virtually, so that we can get the opinion and insights of the community as a whole without having to come together. We did have town halls and forums as part of the phase one project to get initial information. We've moved that to phase two, that once we have the messaging, we can start getting some feedback on that messaging from a town hall, hopefully in, by then, in-person situation, so that we can make some tweaks and alter to that, to that messaging. I'm saying we figuratively, this is really all the work of OBI. Just feeling kind of fun tonight.
It's the bowtie.
It's gotta be, yeah. So research objectives, I won't make you read all of that, but really the research objectives is to really determine, we don't want to be marketing ourselves as a community if our community doesn't believe that's who we really are. So one of the objectives was to find out, what does the, what do people and stakeholders in the community think of Bellevue and think who we are and what we ought to be versus us just kind of making something up and that not really matching? So that's been a, a major target of their, their research. And the methodology that they've used, we've had key stakeholder interviews, some selected group interviews, general population survey that went out through Bellevue four one one on social media, and then we've also surveyed our Bellevue Chamber of Commerce members as well. And then OBI also did a competitive landscape review that they looked at some similar cities from a social media and website standpoint to see how it is that they're presenting themselves as well. So some summaries of findings from the stakeholder interviews, again, I won't make you read all of these, but I'll highlight a few, that we have good schools, employment opportunities, and affordable housing. That came up very frequently, that we are a family-friendly community. Many, many see the need to draw in businesses of the future, tech, and make Bellevue a place people want to live and do visit, do business and visit, and that we need to bring in businesses and encourage development around family-friendly activities. Family-friendly was, was a very high-ranking theme through our stakeholder interviews. Differentiators, us between other communities, what's the difference? So the key stakeholders identified things, some of our, our amenities, if you will, Fontenelle Forest, boat ramps in the riverfront, a movie theater, restaurants, and Offutt, as they compared to Papillion, not necessarily as attractions to new businesses or visitors or, or residents. So that's not things that, that people felt necessarily were going to bring people in, but it was differentiators that we had that other area communities did not have. Obviously, lots of references to a sense of community. The people in Bellevue were proud to work here and have each other's backs. It's a tight-knit community. Everyone knows everyone, and many people were born here and grew up here. So interesting insights through some of the research and summarizing things from a couple of different pages here. But that seemed to be a blessing and a curse for our community, that some, some people felt as though because Bellevue was such, such a tight-knit community for those individuals wanting to, to have more of a permanent residence here, if they weren't a Bellevuite, they didn't necessarily feel as though it was a welcoming community. So kind of a, kind of a dichotomy of, of what people had to share, which is, which is interesting. Stakeholders felt that Offutt is a wonderful advantage to the area. However, it's often associated with Omaha and not with Bellevue. So that, that's really part of the, the messaging that we need to work on as well, to make sure that people understand that Offutt is connected to, to Bellevue and not as many references to Omaha. The general public survey, differentiators, OBI has categorized these between the old ways, the small town, and then some miscellaneous. Folks felt as though it's older and doesn't provide family-friendly activities or affordable housing. These are verbatim quotes from, from some of the surveys. Seems to be stuck in, in old ways. It acts and feels older and slow. From a small town, it has a, a larger population, but still doesn't feel super large like Omaha and has better schools. Small-town atmosphere, safe neighborhoods, hometown feeling. And then from a miscellaneous standpoint, we've got the riverfront that we can use to our advantage, the military base, public schools, Bellevue University, golf. the military base, public schools, Bellevue University, golf courses, police and fire departments, were all seen as positive attributes. Summary of the findings, so all of the attributes, of all of the attributes tested, Offutt and the general presence of military personnel and the civilian population it attracts is considered to be Bellevue's greatest strength. Entertainment options, outdoor activities in the riverfront, were at the bottom of people's list of attributes they associated with Bellevue. And multicultural diversity was at the bottom of the list as well, which could be a problem considering that while Bellevue has a black population around six percent and a Hispanic population of eleven point six percent, that is a lower ratio based on the, the, those same demographics with the military base itself. So, kind of writing, writing that a little bit. So, fo- focus group discussions. What came out of there was that we need a champion for Bellevue, and, and I think we can all agree with that, right? We, we need to be looking out for Bellevue, which is exactly why we're, we're engaged in the branding initiative anyway. Put Bellevue first, current growth plan lacks vision, it just identifies what types of things should go where. So what is that overarching vision and how do we communicate that? Bellevue is unaccepting, unaccepting of being a part of the Omaha metro area. We need to blur the lines and need to welcome all and encourage all to come in. Developers are seeing Bellevue as a good place to be and offering affordable housing, Offutt Air Force Base, Fontainele Forest, in a convenient location with great access. So, that access, accessibility piece was great, and seen as a positive attribute. Good quality of life lends itself to technology in a highly educated population, and we want viable businesses in the technology and communication industries, utilizing what we have available to us. And looking for opportunities to help the city holistically. So, our brand strategy and core strategic positioning, the journey begins. So during this stage is where, at the highest level of, of we identify who we are as a community and what we want to be for the future. So it's going to be very forward-thinking, that, that branding and that messaging is going to acknowledge the past, but look towards the future, right? So it's going to be very aspirational. We'll take a strong look at the fundamental values of the citizens and stakeholders of Bellevue, and create kind of pillars that we, we work from, that this is who we are foundationally as a community. And what's always guided Bellevue is what makes it unique. Now's the time to take the data and harness the power of our community's passion to catapult us into the future. So those are, are what we're doing. So we'll, we'll, they'll be working on branding from a who we are standpoint. What's important there is, is really identifying who we are, not who we say we are, but what people say we are when we're not in the room, basically, right? We've got to, we've got to know that and be able to work with that to be able to move forward appropriately. So, second half of this slide, while we may not be able to directly control everything about our brand, we can influence our brand and image by identifying and filling our community's purpose, living up to our core values, identifying our true strengths and differentiators, and strategically communicating the right messages to the right people at the right time. So that will become all of that, that branding and messaging, as well as worked into the integrated marketing plan. I thought these were interesting and wanted to share a few of these tidbits. The Bellevue community believes in the importance of a well-out, well-laid-out plan for development of their city to attract new businesses to Bellevue. We want to celebrate our history, but look forward to our future, so to acknowledging that past, but looking forward-thinking. Seeks a vibrant city that offers community amenities to its residents and businesses, and wants to be part of a dynamic community as a whole that cares for one another and looks to the future. And recognizes that the, that Bellevue is one city with a collection of diverse communities, but all have a desire to come together as one, one city, one entity. Vital attributes, the base, again, came up as, as number one. Positive school systems, with four high schools serving the Bellevue community. Small-town laid-back feel. Location and proximity to Omaha is a definite attribute. And it's, and we have a dichotomy between our old and our new, just kind of summarizing there. Some of the challenges, perception that Bellevue is conservative and not welcoming, that its residents are not open to the LGBTQ community, that there are a few restaurants or events that attract people to Bellevue. And while having Offutt or Stratcom located within Bellevue is a general plus, a greater challenge is that a lot of people associate Offutt with Omaha and not Bellevue. And that generally, there's a lack of awareness of Bellevue, right? Who is it, what are we about, and what do we want to be in the future? So there, there is the work, that's, that is the next steps. So our current project timeline, discovery and insights, full presentation deck will be provided to me and the branding initiative committee by the end of this week. That deck, seriously, they, they did set, was like a hundred and thirty slides. So, that will have all of the verbatims, all of the research, down to the detail, presented to that branding initiative committee, so that they can sift through and take a look at, at all of the data. Then, OBI will work with the feedback from the branding initiative committee to start working on those initial, initiative, initial executive summaries and messaging, and that, those presentations will, we have a calendar date set for twelve one with the branding committee, to hear those initial presentations and provide feedback. And then we'll get our master creative brief towards the end of December. Ultimately, by the end of February, we should be through with phase one, moving into phase two and ready to be here presenting logos, color schemes, and branding messaging. That was a whole lot of information, detailed information, but just wanted to make you aware that while the initial timeline was, was a little slower, it's been positive. The work has continued slowly but surely, and we are indeed making progress.
Very good.
Questions?
Any questions for Kevin? Councilman Shannon?
I guess in listening to all that, I worry that the base that you're drawing the information from wasn't very broad.
So the survey for, from Bellevue four one one was a little less than eight hundred folks.
The Bellevue Malcontents website, really, that's where you went?
Yeah, well.
Come on. What, what about the real people in Bellevue? What about the real citizens of Bellevue? What did you do to reach out to them? I mean, we're going to let the Malcontents represent us?
I, I don't, I would disagree that Malcontents are on Bellevue four one one.
That's all that is, is people yelling at each other.
I think you're confusing that with another one.
All right. Yeah, I, I don't think you did much to get to the real citizens of Bellevue. And I worry that they're not being represented in this. And I think you're not going to get the right perspective because of it.
So, OBI reaches out, I know I got a phone call in the past from them, so they're reaching out by phone as well, at least I'm assuming that.
We've identified key stakeholders in the community, so they did one-on-one interviews. They did the survey through Bellevue four one one, they did the survey through the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. And then the, the group stakeholder interviews.
I know, I personally participated in one as a, as the city attorney, and I know other members of the council, and Susan was there, and I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and great presentation.
Thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kevin. I really want to highlight OBI because I think they are very sensitive, they are very intuitive, and they know how to work with people to bring out information from them. My experience with them, I was very impressed with the quality of work, with the people who were doing that work, with their dedication to it, and with their understanding and insight to Bellevue itself from personal experience, so that they could gather and put all this together. So I, I feel very encouraged by it, I think you've done a good job, and I, I think they've done a very good job, particularly giving, given the handicap of having to do so much of this during the COVID epidemic.
Yeah.
So, all things considered, I feel it's well on track and is pretty representative. The things that I read in it, the things that I saw, I, I would say it is a good representation.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we need that dive, the diversity in, in public opinion, right? And to your point, Councilman Preister, OBI has, has the skill and the talent to be able to take those, those areas of concern, right? That, that folks are, are not necessarily happy with Bellevue. We've got to know that, and how do we flip that script, and how do we change that messaging to take that forward? The, the worst thing that we can do is create brand messaging and have a community saying, well, that's not the Bellevue that I live in, right? And we've, we've got to be sure that we're messaging that appropriately, taking all of the, the good and the bad, and being able to move all of that forward in a positive manner.
Councilwoman Welch?
Kevin, and I want to concur with what Councilman Preister said, you know, great job on this. It's very interesting to read this, because having been born and raised in Bellevue, you think Bellevue is a certain way, and then you read this, and it, you start questioning your thoughts about what people perceive it, what they think. What do they say about us when we're not in the room, which was one of the slides? So, I think it's, it's very telltelling about what people feel about us, and now at least we have the information and we can do something about it. So, thanks for the great job on that.
Thank you.
Councilman Burns?
Kevin, I want to thank you in the OBI group. I want to ask, so besides community stakeholders, or key community stakeholders, and going on like the Bellevue four one one group, did you guys reach out, you know, outside of Bellevue?
Some of those key stakeholders were Omaha area individuals, absolutely. One of the, one of the plans was to have a town hall that included people external from, from Bellevue, but of course with COVID, those, those town hall situations ended up kind of being put on hold, and we've shifted that to phase two to have those town halls, hopefully in-person to be able to present the brand messaging, and then get feedback on that to make any tweaks if, if folks feel as though it doesn't really match.
Okay, because I also think it would be really interesting to get the perspective of individuals on the outside looking into.
I, I would say that that has been fairly limited, based on the stakeholders we were able to, to have one-on-ones with outside of the Bellevue area, but we did at least have some input there.
Okay, cool, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, that moves us to item number nine, approved citizen communication, nine A, current DHM and mitigation of the effects on Bellevue citizens, Sarah Centeno. Come forward and state your name and address, and, you have five minutes to talk.
Good evening. I am here today to address the local, our local leadership about our, the current pandemic that we're in. Just as reference, I am the current school board president, I've also been a nurse for twenty-three years, and I'm also a mother and an active community member. I want to start by saying our teachers are exhausted, our nurses, our support staff are exhausted. They're overwhelmed. We see numbers are just increasing and increasing and increasing. And we know that the infection rate means that two to three weeks after this, these spikes, we're going to see increased hospitalizations. We are limited. This is a scarce, a resource scarcity issue. And I think there are things within the city that we can do, that you all can do as local leaders, in order to mitigate the spread of the pandemic. And I'm here to ask you to please consider those options. I would advocate for implementing a mask mandate and limiting occupancy in restaurants and bars. We also need our city leaders and employees, including the Bellevue Police Department, to wear masks. I sit here today, and I honestly, I'm a little disappointed that only half of our council wears masks, and our mayor chooses not to. The directed health measures don't include Plexiglas, they include the, uh, being in this, in an enclosed room within six feet of each other for longer than fifteen minutes. And it's not, there's no magic fourteen minutes. Uh, putting yourselves at risk, yes, those are your own choices, but also everyone you encounter. And I think that it is so disheartening to our teachers, and I know it's so disheartening to our nurses and to the support staff, to see our city leaders and our state leaders walk around and not follow the directives that we're making, and, and they're suffering for it. I've also seen numerous social media posts, and I've seen in-person interactions where masks are not worn, including a Bellevue police officer coming to my home without a mask. I can't imagine what the contact tracing is for the Bellevue police. I've also seen numerous times, multiple officers inside convenience stores without masks on, just talking, and it's, it's just very disappointing. I've also looked at the city page to see the, just so you know, the link to the Sarpy County, Cass County Health Department doesn't work, says page not available. There's also no readily available update through the city webpage for DHMs or any recent action that the city has addressed in the ongoing and worsening pandemic. I've reviewed the minutes and the agendas for the last couple meetings, and it doesn't seem that this is even something that, it, maybe it's talked about, but it's not on any recording. I pulled up the City of Bellevue Coronavirus Response and Actions Timeline. It ends on September fourth. That's the last time that this list was updated. It's mid-November. It's unacceptable for our local leaders not to be addressing this very, very important issue. In the schools, we're reaching a breaking point. Our teachers and staff are exhausted and stressed. We had to take additional time off over Thanksgiving in order to give our staff more time. We have increasing numbers of quarantine staff and positive staff. We are at breaching the point where we are not going to be able to continue to keep schools open. If our schools go to online or remote learning, we're ready, but it's less than optimal learning environment, and it would have a hugely negative impact on many of our working parents. Bellevue needs to take measures to protect its citizens. Our schools will close, and our local economy will suffer even more. We have the best infectious diseases doctors in the United States at University of Nebraska Medical Center, and our leaders are choosing not to listen to them and follow their advice. I understand that the mayor believes that the city does not have the power to institute a mask mandate. I read the article, the, what was put out today, seems that he relies solely on the Sarpy-Cass County Health Department in order to, and following their directed health measures. However, that department has been hamstrung by the governor. He has said he will not authorize them to authorize a mask mandate. I don't understand what the governor's, the governor's opinion is, is incomprehensible. There are options for the city in issuing a mask mandate. These options were brought, there's plenty of debate, in fact, front page of the city. Other, of the Omaha World Herald, other cities eye mandates as they know.
Thank you for your input, Miss Centeno, appreciate it. We'll take everything you said under advisement when we meet with our, our regular legal team, our county-wide legal team, and.
I want to leave with one thing. Mr. Hensel said, the people in this community want to be part of a dynamic community that cares for one another. That's all I'm asking you to do.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Yeah, so, um, first, I, I do want to thank you for coming up here and sharing that. I wanted to, I saw this was going to be on the agenda, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to read the public polls in the Omaha World Herald. But Elaine Payton wrote, and I'll read it for you. It says, "My friend lived in Iowa. She died today of COVID, and she became a number. If her president had told her to wear a mask, she would have. If her governor had told her to wear a mask, she would have. If her mayor had told her to wear a mask, she would have. They didn't tell her, she died. She is now a number." And I think that's a really good reminder to realize that there's faces to all the numbers that we see with positivity rates. Um, I do have a few remarks that I did prepare since this is on the agenda. Couple things, what we know about the virus is not going away. It is getting worse. It's filling our hospitals with patients and our morgues with victims. We don't know with certainty um a date when our general population will have access to a vaccine and how that'll be distributed or how effective it'll be. What we do know is that this is not an easy or popular position to take, but leadership requires the courage and adult responsibility to do what is right to protect our people, particularly those who are most vulnerable. What we do know is the virus has impacted certain zip codes in Douglas County more than others, and at least one of those is across Harrison from northern Bellevue neighborhoods, and it is not likely the vi- virus will be deterred by a street sign. What we do know is this is a virus, not a partisan talking point, and to treat it as such is a detriment to our constituents. We know four Republican governors who swore they would not support a statewide mask mandate have adopted one in their states just since the election. Utah Governor Gary Herbert on November ninth, West Virginia Governor Jim Justice, and North Dakota Governor Doug Burp, um, I can't pronounce his last name, on November fourteenth, and Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds, whose mandate goes into effect today, and Republican governors who put public health first adopted mask ordinances as early as July in Alabama, Arkansas, Indiana, Ohio, and Texas. We do know State Senator Justin Wayne disputes the governor's claim that Nebraska cities, other than Omaha and Lincoln, cannot adopt such ordinances. We see that Senator Wayne says state law permits cities like Bellevue too, and I quote, "make regulations to prevent the introduction and spread of contagious infectious or malignant disease into city." We do know that it is becoming obvious Nebraska has one of the top ten infection rates per population in a nation, and healthcare experts are warning this will get worse before it gets better. We know other cities in Nebraska, all smaller than Bellevue, are considering their own mask ordinances in a matter of days. These include Ralston, Scotts Bluff, Grand Island, and Carney. All have mayors supportive or open to mask mandates at this dire time. We need to stop excusing inaction by heeding what may be inaccurate information or edicts from the governor. We owe it to our citizens to do better, to investigate, to deliberate, and if necessary, to deliver unnecessary efforts to protect our families. There's no telling when the governor might change his mind like so many of his colleagues, but we needn't bring our hands in the silence. And council members, we should not go into this winter unarmed, simply because we are uninformed.
Councilwoman Shannon.
Hello, and I thank Sarah for coming in tonight, and I thank Young Thomas for that little speech. But let's clarify a couple of uh points that you hit on. One, the the vaccine started being distributed in four states already. It has a ninety-four point five percent effectiveness, okay? So the vaccine is already being distributed, and I checked while both of you were talking. The sky is not falling. Life is not getting bad. Yes, lots of people are testing positive, but hospitals are not filling up. People are not dying at greater rates, okay? The mortality of this has been far less than predicted. It's less than the flu, okay? So I think it's time as public officials that we need to remain calm, keep the public calm. The vaccine is coming. It's already being distributed in four states, okay? It's, it's time for us to act as leaders and not try to scare the hell out of people because this is not as bad as you guys are making it sound, and the fix is on the way, okay? Thank you.
I'll just add one thing, Councilman Burns, uh, you said that the lady would still be alive if the mayor asked to wear a mask. I can tell you, the city has been asking continuously for people to wear masks, to keep their distance if they cannot wear, if they can't keep their distance, they have to wear a mask. That's been a message that we've had out um since day one, I believe, uh, wash your hands. Hygiene, just, we've been preaching that and preaching that. So so I'm not sure what your statement meant by if the mayor would have asked. I mean, is is asking, are you saying if the mayor would have mandated a mask ordinance or if the mayor would have asked?
I just um got that out of the public poll.
I I just want to clear that the city has been uh on task as far as uh sending out messages, and we've been uh working in unison with the county. There are thirty-two different people from the counties, including all mayors, uh, city attorneys, administrators, county commissioners, judges, uh, county attorneys, emergency management personnel that we meet every Thursday to go over what needs to be done that next week. And I'm not talking about the meetings in between. There's a lot of meetings in between. So your officials are working very hard on keeping this under as much control as we can. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the discussion, and thank you, Sarah, for bringing it forward because it's timely. It's before us, and to not discuss it, I think, is not wise. Thomas's article brings to mind the fact that there are a lot of statistics. Those statistics don't mean as much until you know somebody who's one of them. And just this week, one of those statistics is my sister-in-law. And unfortunately, she got COVID and she has now passed. And so it is personal to me, and I have a concern for those healthcare workers. I have concern for the people on the front line dealing with it, the teachers who are put in harm's way. And we need to do everything that we can. It means all of us doing our part, doing whatever we can. And we know that there is still a lot of information we don't know about COVID. Some people were under the impression that once they got it, they were immune to it. Just last week, the World-Herald reported that doctors were finding people with very serious conditions who had once had COVID and then months later mild cases turned into very serious cases. So we don't know what's going on, and there's a lot that still needs to be learned. But the World-Herald in Thursday's paper said that the CDC now says masks protect the wearer too. They have said that it protects other people because things aren't spread as quickly. Wearing a mask protects the wearer as well. And required masks, in that same paper, it says Kansas had a mandatory mask requirement in every county in the state. They removed it earlier in the year, but sixteen of those counties kept it. In those sixteen counties, they found a fifty percent reduction per capita of COVID. So both of those are saying it's a simple thing, even though I don't like to wear it and it isn't comfortable for many of us. It's one thing that all of us can do, and it's proven despite people not believing it, the professionals, the medical people believe that it helps. I would agree with Councilman Shannon. We shouldn't be up here scaring people. But we have to be realistic, and we need to listen to the scientists and the medical people who are telling us it's serious. I am completely optimistic that we're going to get through it. I think we're going to be a better society on the other end. We're going to be a very different society. We're going to operate differently, and life will be different. But we're going to get there. I have complete confidence. But until we do, I plead with everybody, don't become a family member or a statistic yourself. Wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands, avoid those large gatherings. Do what you can, and if we all do that, whether it's required or mandated or whether we just have, as our pastor told us from the pulpit, some compassion for the people going through this, then we will get through it. We will get through it faster, and I think our economy will be better. But we got to get through it first, and together I think we can do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you. Item ten, liquor licenses, ten A, recommendation to approve replacing application for a corporation name change of a class one liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale for Apple Bellevue doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar at one zero four zero two South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one two three, and Eric R. Ratliff as manager. Is the applicant here?
Uh, Representative, yes, sir.
Okay, uh, don't need you to speak, but if anybody has a question, I'll just refer them to you. I will open it up for public hearing on the liquor license uh application. So if there's anybody here wanting to speak for or against, uh, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and uh entertain a motion. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control, Control Commission to replacing application for a corporation name change of a class I liquor license to sell beer, wine, and disti- distilled spirits on sale for Apple Bellevue doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar at one oh four oh two South Fifteenth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one two three, and Eric R. Ratliff as manager.
I'll second that.
Motion by, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Uh, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading, eleven A, ordinance number four zero one nine, and ordinance to amend section six dash twenty-two of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to restraint uh regarding dogs. Need a motion? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve ordinance number four oh one nine.
I'll bark a second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Shannon. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four zero two zero, request to rezone tax lot fourteen located in the southwest quarter of section thirty-one, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth. P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from A G to M L for the purpose of light industrial development. Applicant is Ryan Steele. The location is one one seven one five South Sixtieth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero two zero, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one one seven one five South Sixtieth Street. More particularly described in section one of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be held December first, two thousand twenty at six P M here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. We have none this evening. Item fifteen, resolutions, fifteen A, resolution number two zero two zero dash four three, approve and authorize mayor to sign resolution and the construction engineering agreement with Olson for the Thirty-Sixth Street, North Three Seventy to Sheridan Project. MAPPA number five zero six one five, control number two 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 seven six, in an amount not to exceed four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars for city share. Total agreement cost is two million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty twenty dash forty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen is current business, sixteen A, approve and authorize city council president to sign application for federal assistance S F dash four two four for fiscal year twenty C D B G entitlement funds in the amount of three hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, and submit to HUD, C D B G Specialist Finance Director has brought that forward. And I am going to recuse myself and turn this over to Council President Preister since I have a interest in one of those properties.
Thank you, Mayor. I will continue the meeting and be in charge as you recuse yourself. Anyone on the council wanting to make a motion? Councilman Cook.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen A.
I'll second that.
Have the motion by Councilman Cook, seconded by Councilwoman Welch. Is there any discussion? Then I'll call for the vote. Please vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Shannon voting no.
The motion then carries. Thank you. On to sixteen B, approve the environmental review, record and request my wording is jumping around on me, record and request for release of funds for C D B G twenty twenty projects and authorize the city council president to sign the HUD and HUD form seven oh one five dash one five, request for release of funds and certifications and submit to HUD, C D B G Specialist. And that is what it is.
And I'll just state for the record that the mayor is also still out of the re- out of the room and has recused himself on this item as well for our conflicts.
Which is part of the conflict and which we have addressed. Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion. Councilman Cook.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve sixteen B.
I'll second that.
We have the motion by Councilman Cook, seconded by Councilwoman Welch to approve sixteen B. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Motion carries. I will be signing those items after the meeting. And at this point, there's no remaining conflict, so the mayor is back, and he will finish taking care of the
All right, thank you. Council President Preister. So we're on sixteen C. Recommend approval of the purchase of two vehicles from Anderson Ford Lincoln not to exceed a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars with reimbursement through the CARES Act. Councilwoman Stinson. Motion by Stinson, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, recommend approval of the purchase of a command post trailer from M B F Industries, Inc., not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars with reimbursement through the CARES Act. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve sixteen D.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding in agreement with Bellevue Native Plant Society for providing the maintenance of the plantings in the public areas as described per the agreement for a three-year period beginning September fifteenth, two thousand twenty through September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Motion by Preister, seconded by Cook. Comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I I want to thank the Native Plant Society. There are a group of volunteers who approached me about taking care of this rain garden that we have. It's public property, but there have been some trees. We don't like to get rid of trees, but they shouldn't be in a rain garden in appropriate location, and a few weeds that have sprung up. So there are volunteers willing to come out. We've already had four workdays on Saturday afternoons. And removed a lot of those weed seeds and a lot of the plants. Uh it's right next to the Papio Creek Trailhead, so a lot of people see it. There's signage there explaining what it is, and it's in a very well-used area. So this is going to make it look better, appear better, and in the season, a lot of wildflowers and blooms. That will be very scenic. There are people over in that area. And some of them even staying at our uh Bellevue Hotel and Convention Center with weddings. That take their pictures out in that area. So I particularly thank the Bellevue Native Plant Society volunteers for doing that work. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to make an amendment to sixteen E and add into section two. That the city shall not be held liable for any injury or other property damage that may result to the Bellevue Native Plant Society, also known as BNPS. Its agents or assignees as a result of the labor and maintenance of BNPS, its agents or assignees as per legal's request.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister to amend. The memorandum of understanding as stated by Councilwoman Welch. Any? Councilman Preister?
I I would just ask, I I think our legal counsel advised doing this. This is the standard form that our Parks Department uses. So if we need to do it with this, we probably need to do it with all contracts. So I would just suggest that we work with parks and modify it, so going forward in the future, we're we're covered. It's just a good update, so I advise that. Thank you.
So a motion by Welch, seconded by Preister to amend. Is there any further comments or questions on the amendment? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Preister, seconded by Cook to approve sixteen E as amended. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
And all voting yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Those are entered the first meeting of the month. And uh next is, we have no closed session, so take a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to adjourn. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Have a good and safe evening.